...Major, Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Good morning. Madam Speaker, I move, notwithstanding the House rules, that we revert back to motions for purposes of doing a couple of housekeeping initiatives.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to take Bill 70-32 as introduced by V. Anthony Ada, an act to add a new Article VIII to Chapter 32 of 5 GCA relative to gift certificates and gift cards and gift certificates. I move that this be placed in the top of the second reading file for purposes of entertaining one technical amendment.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, the second thing that I move to take out of the third reading file is Bill 242-32COR as amended on the floor by Senator Brandon McCrudy, and it's an act to amend Section 28.65 of Article II of Chapter VIII Title IX GCA relative to crime of indecent exposure, and I move that this be placed as the second item on the second reading file for purposes of making a technical amendment.
On the motion, hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, at the request of the sponsor of Bill 224 relative to some changes in the procurement law, I move that that be placed on the second reading file for the sponsor's disposition when we get to that item.
On that motion with hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I also move to place now at the top of the second reading file a new resolution, number 312-32LS, introduced by Speaker Pangolinan, Senator Snikolas, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Uggins, Senator Barnes, Senator Cruz, myself, Senator Rodriguez, and yourself, Madam Speaker. And copies have been made, and it's relative to requesting declaratory judgment from the Supreme Court of Guam as to the withdrawal of funds from the Income Tax Refund Efficient Payment Trust Fund for purposes other than the payment of income tax refunds, and more particularly, the interpretation and application of the prohibition on the use of the Income Tax Refund Efficient Payment Trust Fund as set forth in 11 GCA 50101 and 11 GCA 51101 in all printed sections.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, there was a public hearing.
You're going to speak?
It's on the top of the second reading file.
It's on the agenda, so then you'll be able to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, Madam Speaker, there was a public hearing conducted by Senator Rodriguez's committee yesterday, and he has circulated the committee reports, and they're ready. And so I move to place on the legislative concurrence file the appointment of Ernesto V. Espaldán Jr. to be a member of GITA and Lawrence M. Alcario to be a member of the Guam Council on Mental Health and Substance Abuse, and the reports from both committees is to do confirm. So I moved that this be on the legislative concurrence file.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, now that we're in the legislative concurrence file, I have no other motions. I move that these two appointments that we just moved, Ernesto V. Espaldán Jr., member of GITA, and Lawrence Alcario, member of the Guam Council on Mental Health and Substance Abuse, I move that they be placed in the voting file.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. We're now prepared to go to the second reading file with Resolution 312-32LS.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. So on the second reading file, I have Resolution 312, recognize the author, Speaker Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and sidus masi, and manana sidus para todos. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move then that Bill, I mean Resolution 312-32LS be placed in the third reading file, and I'd just like to briefly explain the resolution.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as you know, the issue of income tax refunds is not a new issue, and this legislative body has, over the years, enacted legislation, signed into law by the various governors, that make it and facilitate the isolation of these revenues in an account that will only be used to pay for income tax refunds. And what has occurred over the years is that these laws have not been followed. Only until we, of course, had the lawsuit, have these laws could, even though we have pressed every single governor since these laws were passed, to ensure that they follow the law in making their deposits and ensuring that, once the money gets into these accounts, that they can only be withdrawn when we're going to pay refunds. And Madam Speaker, what we've seen is that we have seen monies made and deposited into the income tax refund account, but then they're withdrawn, not for the purpose of paying the refunds, but to fund government operations. And that's exactly what has gotten us into the $350 million debt, Madam Speaker, in that we had to borrow the money, we couldn't pay it off with our cash flow, which, if the laws were followed, that's how the laws are designed, to help it pay from our cash collections on a year-to-year basis, Madam Speaker. And so, Madam Speaker, the controversy continues to be a back-and-forth controversy between the legislature and administration in whether or not these laws are being followed and whether or not they have to follow the laws. And so what, a tool, Madam Speaker, that is available to the legislative body and to the governor as well, is when it's a matter of law and an interpretation of law, and there's no controversy as to the facts, then a declaratory judgment may be filed in Supreme Court for the interpretation of that law. I don't think anybody disputes the fact that the money needs to be deposited, the money needs to stay there, and the money can only be withdrawn for the purpose of paying the refunds. Now, the, so those are the facts of the matter, and so the interpretation is that the governor doesn't interpret the law the way we do, which allows him and which he has done, withdrawn these monies for other than the refunds, Madam Speaker. And so this is the most, I hate, non-adversarial way of trying to resolve the issue of whether or not these funds can be withdrawn for any other purpose, Madam Speaker. And this really is what is designed for the declaratory judgment process, where we just file the briefs with the Supreme Court, make the oral arguments, and then Supreme Court makes a ruling on whether or not the laws are in place and whether or not they have to be followed. And we have used this vehicle in the past to try and get out of this he-said, she-said controversy. It's even more critical, Madam Speaker, on the issue of income tax refunds, because we have to pay these refunds under the stipulated order of the Supreme Court, I mean, of the District Court, and if we don't follow this law, we can't borrow any more money. We have to pay these refunds within six months in a timely manner of being filed. And we can't borrow any more money, Madam Speaker, to help us pay these on time. And so what is most important is that we owe our taxpayers this money. We have a duty to follow the laws of Guam, and these monies must be deposited and can only be withdrawn. Even the public auditor in review of the income tax refund account had noted that monies were withdrawn not for the purpose of paying the refunds, Madam Speaker. And so this resolution would authorize this body, would direct this body, and authorize the Office of Finance and Budget, because it is a budgetary matter, and the Committee on Appropriations, to file this declaratory judgment, to present case to the Supreme Court that will then have the Supreme Court read the laws, arbitrate them, make a decision, and then everybody needs to abide by the decision, Madam Speaker. So I think that, given where we're at today with regards to the refunds, what we've seen in the monies being taken out, and we're getting this information from the bank accounts, these are the same accounts the Department of Administration has, and only when we pass the law that says they need to give us this bank account information have we been able to verify and track that, in fact, these monies were being withdrawn after they were deposited and not for the purpose of paying the refunds, Madam Speaker. So this would settle the matter of whether the laws are in place, whether those laws are valid, and whether or not the administration has to follow the law as called for with regards to how we treat those accounts, where we set aside the money that taxpayers have overpaid this government and must be returned to them in a timely manner, and the laws designed to ensure that must be followed, Madam Speaker. So I ask my body to just resolve this, place it before the Supreme Court, and have them arbitrate this as the way the declaratory judgment process is designed.
On the motion, Senator Duñez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise and, I guess, maybe to ask a few questions on Resolution 312-32. If the author would yield, my first question would be, has this resolution had a public hearing, given that it appears to be very substantive in nature?
Speaker Pangolinan, you yield to the question?
It has not, Madam Speaker. And because, Madam Speaker, this is a matter of the body's prerogative, I mean, this is, who would come to testify would be members of this body, in terms of that it affects the powers of the legislature, and so, no, it has not had a public hearing.
Senator?
Okay, well, I guess then I'll just go forward with my comments, especially after the retiring speaker just made the final comment there. I completely disagree that it would be the members of this body that would come, only be the members of this body, or restricted to, or possibly the members of this body to come and comment on and provide input on a very, very substantive resolution such as this. I would envision, Madam Speaker, that surely, because this body has an Office of Finance and Budget, has a oversight of ways and means, certainly would have a substantive presentation, but I would imagine you would have the fiscal policy team, certainly BBMR, certainly Revenue and Taxation, and perhaps even, Madam Speaker, the third branch of government to come in and say, and maybe even the Attorney General's office, to come in and say, "I don't know, with the 5,000-plus cases we have in our caseload, and the criminals we're trying to prosecute, and everything else that we're doing within this government, that this is something that we would want to sit down and take on as a declaratory judgment." And I say that, Madam Speaker, simply because, well, yes, it has been pointed out by the author that there have been years and years, perhaps a couple of decades, of not following the law, as has been proffered as a statement by the author. But, Madam Speaker, in this very body, in the last session of the 31st and now into the 32nd, over some argument and back and forth, we finally resolved, once and for all, the years and years and the practice of not paying our people what we owe them, having borrowed their money, Madam Speaker. And we have come due on that, and then we, once again, just months ago, took monies that were realized, additional monies through compact impact, and paid another $15 million, as is what we were supposed to do. Now, I'm just going off of what I've seen happen in the last few days, Madam Speaker, not taking a position one way or the other, in terms of how good any administration has done, but there is $10 million in checks that are being processed now, according to the news reports, four million of which are for continued prior tax refunds that are being cleaned up and error-free and the like, and $6 million for 2013 filings, which only tomorrow, Madam Speaker, from what I understand, or perhaps Monday, or if weekend days aren't counted, all employers have the responsibility by law to issue the W-2 so that, and not face fines, so that employees can go and file their taxes. So, Madam Speaker, I bring that major, major concern of this issue for two fundamental reasons once again. I feel like deja vu, here we go again. When we want to, when we feel compelled, we bypass the process. We say, because it's our body, because this is how we feel, this is what we can do, we go to a voting file and we slip in a resolution and we say, "Let's vote on this thing," when, for the points that I believe are substantive that I just made, the resolution, while certainly, certainly within the bounds of saying, "Let's ask this question and stop the back-and-forth of he-said, she-said of what is the law." But yet, once again, as I said, this body with Office of Finance and Budget, which basically is a mini BBMR and the SES and all these things that we have in our toolbox, to call oversights on a daily basis, if we had to, to say, "What's the cash flow today? Why are we not holding $15 million? I don't care if you don't pay vendors, I don't care if you don't transfer money to the hospital, it doesn't matter that you don't do this X, Y, and Z or education, transferring the money. And if that's the way we're going to roll, then let's roll that way." But to tie up the courts on a declaratory judgment and have people's time and energy put into this, when a matter such as this, in my opinion, could be resolved with a public hearing, where all parties could come to the table, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, but I have to express my exasperation and my disappointment, once again, that we go down this road. I don't think anybody else, I have never seen a substantive resolution in the time that I've been in this body, put forward on a day of the voting file to be voted on when it has this type of implication. So thank you for allowing me to rise to express my extreme disappointment, Madam Speaker.
Welcome. Mr. Majority Leader, Senator Spiechel.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the resolution, and I wanted to rise as quickly as possible, given the comments of the retiring speaker. You know, we have a duty here in this body to provide for whatever mechanisms, whatever means possible, for us to make sure that the laws are being followed. And this is exactly what the sponsor of Resolution 312 is intending to do. As the retiring speaker said, Madam Speaker and colleagues, there's been a lot of back-and-forth with respect to whether or not the Income Tax Refund Efficient Payment Trust Fund is being followed. And so to now sit back and hear one of our own say that this is so substantive that it requires a public hearing, if you look at the statute on what public hearing requirements are, it says, "No substantive resolution that is to be transmitted to the U.S. President, a member of the U.S. Congress, or head of a foreign state may be passed by less than a term unless it has received a public hearing." You know, the purpose of this section in 2103 of our law is basically so that one or two members don't go off to some international forum and start passing resolutions that commit the entire legislative body or the people of Guam. And I remember the genesis behind this, and it was sponsored by Senator Leon Guerrero in a previous legislature, because that's what's been happening in the past. We have some, few of our members in the past that go off, or we have a legislature in the past that takes positions with respect to public policy without the input of the people of Guam. And so this is why, in this sense, no substantive resolution that is transmitted to these heads of foreign states or members of Congress or the president cannot and shall not be transmitted until we have a public hearing. Now, are we, once again, mixing apples and oranges, trying to confuse our people to say that what we're doing in Resolution 312 is under the cover of darkness, a last-minute attempt to try to slip one in? Madam Speaker, I invite the previous speaker to read the resolution and to understand what a declaratory judgment is. A declaratory judgment is something that a legislative body has the power to seek remedy from the judiciary when a law's not being followed. I don't think I have to talk about civics, right, and the separation of powers and that were quo-equal branches of government, where we pass a law, if the executive branch sees fit, the governor signs it. If there's a problem with interpretation of that law, the only remedy we have is through the judiciary. And so now we're saying that, oh my God, the judiciary is so backlog that they cannot even get involved in a declaratory judgment for an issue that is so vital to our community, and that issue that is so vital to our community, Madam Speaker, is the issue of tax refunds. And so when I understand what our appropriations chair and our Office of Finance and Budget have been doing over the years, I certainly share his frustration in that all the facts are being put forth, but yet it's being distorted because of all the other distortions and all the other attempts. Oh, Speaker Pangolinan is slandering me, and that's what Governor Calvo says. Oh, he keeps slandering me. So what do we do to take that kind of response away and address the issue before this body? And the issue before this body is, what do we do to resolve, once and for all, who is right? We never want to find out who's wrong, Madam Speaker. I never want to find out who's wrong, because if we don't determine who's right, then our taxpayers will suffer. We had a public hearing yesterday where several members of this body kept asking, "How much is this hay plan going to cost?" "Oh, $7 million is budgeted, so we'll allocate, we'll break up those allocations." "Oh, $7 million is what's appropriated, so we'll allocate, and then when we run out of money or need more, we'll come back to the legislature." Madam Speaker and colleagues, that's exactly what the debate was like when we were discussing the bond borrowing for tax refunds. Certainly it was an obligation of the government, and certainly it's something that we had to do to make the taxpayers whole, but we cannot lend a blind eye and just forget about how poorly that presentation was made in the attempt to justify $343 million of bond borrowing. I hope the previous speaker and others will recall that, when the administration came down here, all they said was, "Well, it's money that's owed, and certainly we're going to pay for it through the China Visa waiver, which we have yet to experience, or this massive military buildup, which we have yet to experience as well." But that's how they said they were going to pay for it. And so this whole idea of tax refunds and giving people back their money and then patting them on the back, patting themselves on the back, saying, "We released another $10 million, we released another $20 million," well, Governor, that's your job. And if you don't think it's your job, then that's a federal court order that those tax refunds have to be paid. And even more so, colleagues, that it's a federal court order that tax refunds have to be paid, that we have to ask the Supreme Court if the current administration is in violation of the law. And as the resolution points out, and I believe I remember somewhere, that there's allegedly $43 million that's being siphoning from this Income Tax Refund Efficient Payment Trust Fund account. And so for whatever reason, the governor's saying he's not in violation of the law, for whatever reason, this body feels that he's in violation of the law, I don't see the harm, Madam Speaker, in passing this resolution, which, by the way, it deals specifically with our legislative authorities here. And if you recall, in the last legislature, we set precedent, I know one legislature cannot bind another, but if you want some historical references here, we passed a resolution seeking a declaratory judgment on the matter of La John, and that was done through the Committee on Rules. So the Committee on Rules, if we weren't in session, could exercise this kind of resolution because it deals with the authority of the legislature, and the Committee on Rules is the business, the committee, as a committee, can move forward on certain matters when we're not in session. And so I just want to stop this kind of distortion that we're experiencing, especially the hearing that we had yesterday. And I think that the only remedy that the people of Guam have to know what it is exactly, both parties are saying, is to have a third-party intermediary, which is the courts, determine whether or not this function of law, this very important law, is being followed. Because if we don't put these monies into the Income Tax Refund Efficient Payment Trust Fund, which was established by the sponsor of this resolution, then, Madam Speaker and colleagues, we, it's a court order. Tax refunds will be paid within six months of when they filed, and this resolution builds on the legislature's continued ability and continued desire to make sure that tax refunds is not being spent for operations, and that's what the issue is right now. We've heard the current governor say that to use tax refund monies for operations is stealing. Well, let's find out. Let's find out whether or not this law's being followed, and so let's make sure, Madam Speaker and colleagues, that when people file for their tax refunds, they would get their tax refunds, because the cash will be here, so that this government will stop using their tax refund money for government operations. And so I rise in full support of Resolution 312, and I'm very grateful to be a sponsor of this effort that seeks a final, seeks clarity with respect to the issue before us. Thank you.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Snikolas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this resolution. In the context of everything that's happening right now in our government, basically, and just to make sure that everybody understands, what this resolution does is it's the legislature going to the court, and it's asking the court to make a judgment as to whether or not money that's supposed to be going into this fund for tax refunds is supposed to actually stay in that fund and only be used for tax refunds. Right now, it's not staying in that fund, it's getting taken out and being used for other things. And the good author of the resolution wants to make sure that, when the money goes in there for tax refunds, it stays there for tax refunds. And we just want the courts to be able to come back and say, "Yes, based on our determination, when money goes into that fund for refunds, it must stay there for refunds." And that, at this juncture, Madam Speaker, is incredibly important, because on the 14th of February, if this body takes no action, and I hope we do, on the subject of pay raises for the government of Guam, if we are not making sure that money for tax refunds stays for tax refunds, and if this government implements these raises and there isn't enough money for it, we're going to go right back to where we were once upon a time, where we were taking tax refunds to keep the government afloat. We took out a huge bond to make up for that. We put that on the backs of my kids. And all this resolution is seeking to do is make sure that, since we did that, we're not going to go down that same road, that the money that we've put aside for tax refunds is going to stay for tax refunds. And if we're going to be moving this government in a direction where we're going to be increasing the obligations with respect to pay, we need to make sure that money for tax refunds stays for tax refunds. We need to make sure that education, health, and public safety and the funding that we provide for them stays for them, because, once money becomes tight, and it will become tight, it's not going to be a matter of, "Oh, do I want to pay this, or do I want to pay that?" It's going to be a question of, where's the money for these obligations? And another very important point of this resolution, Madam Speaker, is it doesn't just have to do with the current administration, it has to do with the future of the island of Guam and every administration that we have in the future, and whether or not the money we set aside for tax refunds is going to stay for tax refunds. Because, once we get this judgment from the court, it doesn't matter who the governor is at all, when money goes into this fund for tax refunds, it will be used only for that purpose. So it's very important that we not only pass this resolution in the current climate of obligations that we have in this government, it's important that we pass this resolution for the future sake of our people, to make sure that, when we set aside money for refunds, that money is going to be there. Our people deserve their refunds, not just now, and not just because they're able to get the funds to pay it, but forever. That's the people's money. So when we've crafted laws that is going to set the money aside for that purpose... So when we, when we've crafted laws that is going to set the money aside for that purpose, and when that law isn't being followed and that money is going elsewhere, we are not living up to our commitment to make sure that money is set aside for tax refunds. And all we're asking, well, this resolution is for the courts to make a determination as to whether or not that should be done. If we really believe in paying tax refunds now and forever, then let's make sure that the judgment is there, so the money is there now and forever. Our people deserve that much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, any other speakers? Senator Tiago.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I definitely rise in, in opposition to the resolution, and I do so because of the fact that we haven't, we, we, we are once again here on a Saturday, on a Saturday, ready to vote on bills that our public has had the opportunity to view and watch this body deliberate, discuss the bills, and yet on Saturday morning, we have a resolution that was introduced at 4:28, not given to MIS until 5:22, not posted on the website for anybody, any public comment or any public review at 7:26 PM. You know, in my short time here with the legislature, we've always heard about this, this constant reference to transparency, and yet this is not being transparent. This is not being able to allow for public comment, to allow for a public hearing, and the way that it was, the way that was actually transmitted, it just, it just has, it, it just, it's just unreasonable, unconscionable that we would go ahead and do something like this. You know, it's, um, I can't even talk on the substantive nature of the bill because I just got it 30 minutes ago, haven't really had a chance to review it. I've read through it one time, and I'm trying to listen to the arguments and the deliberation on the floor so I can make a good judgment on, on, on where to move with it, but I still can't get past the fact that we shoved it through the process. We talk about transparency, and yet we're constantly guilty of not being transparent. I'm almost at a loss for words. I'm almost embarrassed, to tell you the truth, to be part of that. The, the fact that if we had the ability to at least transmit it to all the colleagues that are not sponsors of the bill, so that we could review it, even if I had to stay up at night to do so, at least give us that courtesy, so that we could come in here and argue the merits of the resolution. Yet we're just shoving it through again. It's embarrassing. It really is. And I just want to speak on one section of the whereas clause, and I apologize, Madam Speaker. I'm trying to gather my thoughts because I just can't get past this main issue of whether or not this is the right way to go about doing this and not allow our people to know what we're doing. There's a portion on page five of the whereas clause. It says, "The normal process of law would cause undue delay in preventing the further siphoning of funds and the further delay in paying income tax refunds. Any legislature in Guam seeks this special judicial determination to prevent for the payment of income tax refunds, now therefore be it." So what, what is that telling me in, in my, my cursory view of the, the resolution? There is a process to have a resolution, the, the, to resolve the issue, I should say. There is a normal process of law to go through. Not even saying that through the normal process of law, this body has full oversight as to bring in all of the people and constantly follow up on it and determine what's going on. That, Madam Speaker, is the transparency. Our people know and can understand all the different facets of the issue. And then the resolution even goes as far as to say, "Well, a, a, a process exists to resolve the issue," but yet, no, we're going to come in on, we're going to introduce a bill at 4:28 on a Friday night, not even let it, not let it have, uh, public access till 7:26 PM at night, not communicate it to the other members of this body that could at least review it and be ready to deliberate the merits of the resolution, and just bring it in and throw it on the voting file, and let's just vote. And then let's just make a big political spectacle about how it's, it's, uh, it's partisan politics. Madam Speaker, it's not the right way to do things. I won't be a part of it. It's embarrassing, and I definitely stand in opposition to the resolution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, anybody else who'd like to speak? Speaker Pangolino, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, uh, I hear the comments, and maybe just to the retiring speaker, the normal process of laws to file a suit in Superior Court of Guam. I really don't want to do that because there's no argument of what the law says when, when, when there's, or, or the facts. There's no argument about the facts. The fact is, the law exists, and the fact is, money was put into the account, and the fact is, money was taken out of the account, not for the purpose stated in law. Those are facts. The governor's not going to come in and, and argue anything otherwise and say, "Oh, no, I didn't take it out," because those are the facts. When, when we looked at the withdrawal from the account, withdrawal for, to the General Fund for Government Operations, the law says, it should only say withdrawal for the purpose of paying a refund. So there's no argument about what happened. It's whether or not the law that says only for refunds must be followed. The governor's saying, "No, obviously." We're saying, "Yes." And so we don't need to go to an adversarial trial process. What we need to do is go through the process of getting a reading of the law, and that's what the declaratory judgment process, that speeds it up. And it is important because, Madam Speaker, yeah, we, we paid some refunds, but Madam Speaker, we got $120 million that we have to pay, and that money needs to be there between now and April 15th and October 15th, so that we can pay these refunds. There's no more money. Money was taken out. He's saying, "Oh, we're going to pay $10 million." Yes, but we took out $40 million, or just in the month of, of December, they took out $4 million plus $6 million in the same month. They took $10 million out. So what happens when people file after all they're getting their W-2s? How are we going to make that payment? The money has to be constantly put in there and cannot be taken out for other purposes. That's how we got into trouble. And we thought, "Oh, my God, you know, it's okay. We're going to pay it back when we collect more money," and we never did. And by the time everybody woke up, maybe, even though some of us in here were constantly, I for one, constantly saying, "You got to put the money in. You got to put the money in." "Oh, don't worry. We'll put the money in when we collect some more." You know, April 15th, people pay their taxes. We'll collect more money. We'll put it back there. And then when we finally looked up, and some of those that refused to know the truth, to want to know what the truth should be, when they finally put their heads out of the sand, we owed $350 million in back taxes. That's what I don't want to happen again. And the only way to do that is I have a, we have an administration that says they don't have to follow the law, and we have a legislature that says you need to do that so that we don't find ourselves right back. The difference is, this time, when we pull our head out of the sand, we don't have the, we won't have the ability to borrow more money to pay our people. And the only way to avoid that is to follow what the law says at this time, Madam Speaker. And this process about the fact that, that, you know, this is not, uh, not being done pursuant to the rules and, and our, our requirements, it is. As, as the good majority leader, uh, had pointed out to us, this is all within, uh, what we have done. And this is not, this is, it's, it's not, the court would not come in here and testify and say, "Oh, we don't think you should file a declaratory judgment." They can't get involved. They only accept what is filed before them. So to say that, my, we got to have, we got to know whether the courts are going to take the case, that's, that's not the way the process works and so forth, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, once again, I'm trying to resolve this issue on behalf of the people of Guam and stop all this back and forth. Put a process that is the most non-adversarial way of making this determination, so that everybody knows. And as one of the speakers said, "It's not for this governor." I've, you know, we passed those laws for the other governors as well. And we have, I have harassed those other governors in the past as well to follow the law. And what is occurring cannot continue to occur because we will find ourselves right back where we were, in a huge hole. And this time, we will not have the tool of restructuring our finance, which means we're going to borrow money in order to make these payments to our people. So all we're doing is saying, present an issue where there's no controversy of fact, only a difference in the interpretation of the law. Let the, the court, which is vested with that power to make that interpretation, make its judgment, and then everybody abides by it. And so it's a way to just kind of remove everything out of the politics, remove everything of, out of the, the, uh, the arguments back and forth of whether we're doing this or not doing this. The public auditor's report is an independent report that says money was taken out not for the purpose designed by law. And so when that's not being followed, what should hap, what should occur? And that's what we're asking the court. Whether or not those laws are valid, whether or not they reflect the powers of each of the bodies to pass the law and the administration to implement those laws as passed when they are valid, and, and then we move forward. And this will prevent us, again, this just makes sure that today and in the future, if these laws are followed, we will not, when we find ourselves pulling our head out of the sand, we will not find ourselves in the $350 million hole once more. And it is not us who are suffering. It is our people who we have taken that money from and would deny them, uh, getting their money in a timely manner, Madam Speaker. So again, Madam Speaker, I think that this issue is an issue for the body to decide whether or not we should present this for an interpretation before the courts, and it only benefits, I think, everyone in our community and takes all this partisan politics that's been occurring. It's not partisan for me because I'm doing this on behalf of every single Republican, Democrat, and independent out there that is owed a tax refund. So when somebody says it's the partisan politics, I'm not doing this because I'm a Democrat. I'm doing this because there's a Republican out there, there's a Democrat out there, there's an independent out there, who if these laws are not followed, they're all not going to get their refund. I'm doing this on behalf of the people of Guam and the taxpayers of Guam. Thank you, Senator Smase, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Speaker Pangolino. On the motion to send 321 to the third reading file.
Objection.
There is an objection to send a Resolution 312 to the voting file. And please make sure all the senators are in. So those in favor of sending Bill, I mean, Resolution 312 to the third reading, all in favor, please raise your hand. The motion carries. So it's under motion then to send down is, that it's effectuated with the, uh, the votes, the majority votes. And, um, Bill number 70-32. Senator Tonyada, you recognize.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd just like to make a, an amendment on Bill 70-32. Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my amendment is on page three, line 11, on the effective date, and that it'll just be effective upon enactment.
So the amendment is then on page three to say that this, uh...
The effective date of this act shall be upon enactment.
It'll be effective upon enactment.
70-32.
Uh, oh, okay. I'm going, I, I did ask the clerks, and the reason why is because what they're doing is that, um, they have to go back and re, reprint, and because the amendment and the discussion with the, um, uh, the author is that it's just specifically on the effective date. So it's not to delete just that entire section because automatically it would be, so, but you want to make sure it says effective upon enactment.
Right. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the amendment, no objections. Okay, so ordered. So on the motion then to send 70-32 back down then to the third reading file, no objections. So ordered. On the Bill 242, Senator McCready, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to make a motion to send Bill 242, as amended on the floor, back down to the voting file with one amendment.
Okay, what's the amendment?
On line one, a person, a person intentionally exposes their general...
Line one, but what page, what page?
Or intentionally performs any other lewd acts.
Senator, so it's, I know you said line one, but what page?
Line one, page, line one, page two, Madam Speaker. Uh, I'm sorry, line one.
Okay, so it's, it's on page two, but it's...
It's on page two, a person intentionally exposes.
To, okay, so then to make sure that, um...
That's, 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 uh, the line three.
You're right. So that we would put intentionally in the other, um...
And we also added intentionally on B.
A and B.
A and B, yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, we got it. Thank you very much. So on the amendment, no objections. So ordered. And on the motion then to send 242 back down to the 30, uh, to the reading file, no objections. So ordered. Senator Tom Ada, you recognize on 224.
On Bill 224, I request that we just pass on file.
Okay, so on that motion without any objections, and so ordered. Senator Esposito to, uh, let me see. I think we've just about...
Monday, right. So, Madam Speaker, I move that we take a brief recess to give the clerks some time to, um, make copies of the bills that we just moved to the voting file.
Thank you. So the recess in time is so that we can get, uh, printed, then the new 70-32, the new 242, and I understand that they also, um, need to print 225 and 226. So we would take a recess. the new 242, and I understand that they also need to print 225 and 226, so we would take a recess.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I then move that we proceed, now we suspend discussion on the second reading file, and that we proceed to the third reading file. And I also make a motion that we be allowed to vote on Resolution 312 without engrossment.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered. Okay, so we are in the voting file, and first bill on your packet is Bill Number 15-32COR.
Bill Number 15-32COR, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to rezone Lot Number Three, Track 1942, in the municipality of Baragada, from one family dwelling zone R1 to multiple dwelling zone R2.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, nay. Senator Bakreedy. Senator Bakreedy, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, pass. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, pass. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, nay. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, nay. Bill Number 15-32 received six yea votes, nine nay votes. Bill 15 passed. Bill Number 61-32.
Bill Number 61-32COR, introduced by TC Ada. An act to add a new section 67101.7 to Chapter 67 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting the Guam Tropical Energy Code, GTEC.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, aye. Bill Number 61-32 received 14 yea votes, one nay. Bill Number 61-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 130-32COR.
Bill Number 130-32COR, as substituted by the author, introduced by TC Ada. An act to amend Section 1106K of Article 1, Chapter 1 of Title 22 Guam Code Annotated, relative to imposing licensing sanctions for employing aliens without lawful work status.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Vice, Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill Number 130-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 130-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 71-32.
Bill Number 71-32COR, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, V. J. F. Cruz. An act to repeal Paragraph 34 of Section 26203K of Chapter 26 of Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to business privilege tax exemptions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, aye. Bill Number 71-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill 71-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 146-32.
Bill Number 146-32COR, as amended by the Committee on U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs, and Judiciary, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Grant T. McCready, Frank V. Uggan Jr., R.J. Respecho. An act to add new sections 37.70, 37.71, 37.72, and 37.73 to Chapter 37, and to amend Section 7.86B2A of Chapter 7 of Title IX Guam Code Annotated, relative to granting immunity from criminal prosecution of civil action to a person who uses force intended or likely to cause death or serious bodily injury on someone who unlawfully or forcibly enters a residence, vehicle, or business to be known as the Castle Doctrine Act.
Several of our members do not have copies. We're going to take a brief recess. All senators have a copy now of Bill 146-32, so we're going to call for roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, nay. Bill Number 146-32 received 10 yea votes, five nays. Bill Number 146-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 169-32LS.
Bill Number 169-32LS, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to rezone Lot Number 5168-4, located in the municipality of Timooning, from one-family dwelling zone R1 to light industrial zone M1.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 169-32 received 15 yea votes. Okay, she was marking the nay. Bill Number 169-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 179-32.
Bill Number 179-32COR, as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs. Introduced by V. J. F. Cruz, T.R. Munia Barnes, Juth T. Wampat EDD. An act to amend Section 3 of Public Law 30-83, relative to the composition of the Coordinating Committee of the 12th Festival of Pacific Arts to be held on Guam in 2016.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill Number 179-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 179-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 202-32.
Bill Number 202-32COR, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Chris M. Duennius. An act to add new sections 37.50 to 37.55 to Chapter 37 of Title IX Guam Code Annotated, relative to carjacking.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limteako. Senator Limteako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Uggan. I'm sorry, Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill Number 202-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 202-32 is duly passed by this body.
Bill number 206 dash 32 COR.
Bill number 206 dash 32 COR introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, an act to amend subsection C of section 26603 of Article VI, Chapter 26 of Title XI Guam Code Annotated relative to establishing tax rate parity for tobacco products.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, pass. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye.
Bill number 206 dash 32 received 12 yea votes and 3 nay votes. Bill number 206 dash 32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 197 dash 32 COR.
Bill number 197 dash 32 COR as amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampat E.D.D., Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to add a new section 3219.1 to Article II, Chapter III of Title XVII Guam Code Annotated relative to awarding honorary high school diplomas for certain senior citizens.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 197 dash 32 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 197 dash 32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 221 dash 32 COR.
Bill number 221 dash 32 COR as amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, Brant T. McCready, an act to rezone lot number 1106 dash 2 new located in the municipality of Maillau from one family dwelling zone R1 to commercial zone C for the purpose of establishing a medical clinic and healthcare-related commercial activity.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Senator J. Arms, can you please? 221.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 221 dash 32 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 221 dash 32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 215 dash 32 COR.
Bill number 215 dash 32 COR as substituted by the author further substituted by the Committee on Rules and amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., an act to provide for a binding referendum during the 2014 general election to determine whether amendments to the Title X Guam Code Annotated to add a new Article 24 to Chapter 12 relative to allowing the medical use of cannabis, amending provisions of the Controlled Substance Act providing penalties and for other purposes shall be allowed within Guam to be known as the Bakin-Kasey Conception II Compassionate Cannabis Use Act of 2013.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay.
Bill number 215 dash 32 received 14 yea votes and 1 nay. Bill number 215 dash 32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 204 dash 32 COR.
Bill number 204 dash 32 COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs and further amended on the floor, introduced by Michael T. Lintiaco, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Tommy Morrison, Chris M. Duennius, V. Anthony Ada, Judith T. Wampat E.D.D., Brant T. McCready, Michael F. Q. Siniklis, an act to amend section 7105, 7106, 7107, and 7108 of chapter 7, title XVII, Guam Code Annotated relative to the authorization of commercial advertising leases, and to add a new chapter 58, a Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Department of Public Works to establish a commercial advertising space program on school buses, and to establish the DPW Bus Maintenance Fund.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 204 dash 32 received 13 yea votes and 2 nay votes. Bill number 204 dash 32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 186 dash 32. I'm sorry, resolution. Resolution 186 dash 32.
Resolution number 186 dash 32 COR introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Brant T. McCready, relative to respectfully requesting President Barack Obama, Department of Defense Secretary Chuck Hagel, and the United States Congress to permanently station a Terminal High Altitude Area Defense, THAAD, system, and a Patriot missile defense system on Guam for the protection of the people of Guam, the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, CNMI, the neighboring islands throughout Micronesia, and the Asia-Pacific region.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Resolution number 186 dash 32 received 15 yea votes. Resolution number 186 dash 32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 190 dash 32 COR.
Bill number 190 dash 32 COR as amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, Judith T. Wampat E.D.D., Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., an act to add a new chapter 28 to Division II of Title XVII Guam Code Annotated relative to the establishment of the Research Corporation, University of Guam, R.C.U.O.G.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 190 dash 32 received 14 yea votes, 1 nay. Bill number 190 dash 32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 214 dash 32 COR.
Bill number 214 dash 32 COR as amended on the floor, introduced by Michael F. Q. Siniklis, B.J.F. Cruz, Frank B. Uggan Jr., Judith T. Wampat E.D.D., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend section 20111 of Article I, Chapter 20 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing employees of government of Guam agencies and instrumentalities to apply payroll deductions to registered nonprofits.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number two fourteen dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Bill number two fourteen dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number one ninety-two dash thirty-two.
Bill number one ninety-two dash thirty-two C O R as amended on the floor. Introduced by B. J. F. Cruz. An act to add new sections six four point one five, six four point one six, and six four point one seven to Article One, Chapter Sixty-four of Title Nine Guam Code annotated relative to the prohibition and forfeiture of electronic machines or devices to conduct sweepstakes gambling.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Bill number one ninety-two dash thirty-two received fourteen yea votes and one nay. Bill number one ninety-two dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two twenty-five dash thirty-two C O R.
Bill number two twenty-five dash thirty-two C O R as amended by the author and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, T. Armunya Barnes, Elina Yamashita Ph.D. An act to add a new chapter fifty-eight D to Title Five Guam Code annotated relative to the renovation or construction of a new Simon Sanchez High School, and to amend and renumber section two two four two five Q of Article Four, Chapter Twenty-two, Division Two, Title Five Guam Code annotated relative to the appropriation of additional real property tax revenues from the revaluation of real property taxes, and to amend section five three one zero one of Title Seventeen Guam Code annotated relative to the Early Childhood Program Fund.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Bill number two twenty-five dash thirty-two received thirteen yea votes, two nay votes. Bill number two two five dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two thirty-four dash thirty-two, resolution, sorry, resolution number two thirty-four dash thirty-two C O R.
Resolution number two thirty-four dash thirty-two C O R as substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Brant T. McCready, Elina Yamashita Ph.D., Michael F. Houston Nicholas, Tommy Morrison, Judith T. Wampat EDD, T. Armunya Barnes, Chris M. Duñez, R.J. Rispecho. Relative to supporting Guam's application for membership in the Western Interstate Commission for Higher Education, WICHE.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Resolution number two thirty-four dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Resolution number two thirty-four dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Resolution number two seventy-nine dash thirty-two C O R.
Resolution number two seventy-nine dash thirty-two C O R as substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by T. Armunya Barnes, R.J. Rispecho, Judith T. Wampat EDD. Relative to promoting affordable alternative regional transportation between Guam and the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands by means of a ferry service or similar vessels.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Resolution number two seventy-nine dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Resolution number two seventy-nine dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two twenty-six dash thirty-two C O R.
Bill number two twenty-six dash thirty-two C O R as amended by the author and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, Elina Yamashita Ph.D., T. Armunya Barnes, Brant T. McCready, Dennis G. Rodriguez Junior, Tommy Morrison, Chris M. Duñez, Michael T. Limtiako, Frank B. Uggan Junior, R.J. Rispecho. An act to add a new chapter fifty-eight E to Title Five Guam Code annotated relative to the finance, design, renovation, rehabilitation, construction, or maintenance of public schools.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Bill number two twenty-six dash thirty-two received thirteen yea votes, two nay votes. Bill number two two six dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two thirty-one dash thirty-two C O R.
Bill number two thirty-one dash thirty-two C O R introduced by T. Armunya Barnes. An act to rezone lot number twenty-two, block number four, track number one seven zero, West Acres subdivision, municipality of Dededo, from one-family dwelling zone R one to multiple dwelling zone R two.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill number two thirty-one dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Bill number two thirty-one dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two thirty-two dash thirty-two C O R.
Bill number two thirty-two dash thirty-two C O R introduced by T. Armunya Barnes. An act to rezone lot number twenty-three, block number four, track number one seven zero, West Acres subdivision, municipality of Dededo, from one-family dwelling zone R one to multiple dwelling zone R two.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number two thirty-two dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Bill number two thirty-two dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two thirty-five dash thirty-two C O R.
Bill number two thirty-five dash thirty-two, C O R, as substituted on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Ben C. Panglinen. An act to add a new Section Nineteen to Part One, Chapter Two of Public Law Thirty-two dash zero-six-eight, To amend Section One Three Zero Three of Article Three, Chapter One of Title Five Guam Code Annotated, And to add Sections Fifteen and Sixteen to Part One, Chapter Two of Public Law Thirty-one dash two-three-three, Relative to upholding the intent of Elea Sotota's annual appropriations To the Guam Department of Education, G G O E, For every fiscal year and for funding to address the deferred maintenance needs Of the George Washington High School, The retrofitting of unused buildings and facilities at Southern High School For G G O E central offices and for other facilities and maintenance needs of the G G O E.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, nay. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay.
Bill number two thirty-six dash thirty-two, receive ten yea votes and five nay votes. Bill two, bill, no, you wrote two thirty-six, okay. Okay, so correction. Bill number two thirty-five dash thirty-two, C O R, receive ten yea votes and five nay votes. So Bill number two thirty-five dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two thirty-six dash thirty-two.
Bill number two thirty-six dash thirty-two, C O R, as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations and amended on the floor. Introduced by Aline A. Yamashita P H D., T. C. Ada. An act to add a new Section Three One Zero Two Point Five to Article One of Chapter Three, Title Sixteen Guam Code Annotated, Relative to authorizing the Department of Revenue and Taxation To outsource the road testing requirement For certain commercial motor vehicle drivers' licenses.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number two thirty-six dash thirty-two, receive fifteen yea votes. Bill number two thirty-six dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two thirty-seven dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number two thirty-seven dash thirty-two, C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat E D D., Aline Yamashita P H D., T. C. Ada, B. J. F. Cruz, Frank B. Uggan Jr. An act to amend Sections One Two One Zero Seven C Four, One Two One Zero Seven F, And One Two One Zero Seven G of Chapter Twelve, Title Seventeen Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Guam Academy Charter of School Act of Two Thousand Nine.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, nay. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay.
Bill number two thirty-seven dash thirty-two, received eleven yea votes and four nays. Bill number two thirty-seven dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two zero one dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number two zero one dash thirty-two, C O R, As substituted by the author, further substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations And Cultural Affairs and amended on the floor. Introduced by B. J. F. Cruz, T. C. Ada. An act to add a new Section Five One Four One to Chapter Five of Title Five Guam Code Annotated, Relative to establishing a system of training, continuing education, And certification for government of Guam procurement personnel.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, nay. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator.
I'd like to change my vote from no to yes.
So the, the votes then for Bill Two Zero One Dash Thirty-Two Is fourteen yea votes and one nay. So therefore, Bill Two Zero One Dash Thirty-Two is duly passed by this body. Bill number one eighty dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number one eighty dash thirty-two, C O R, As substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs And amended on the floor. Introduced by B. J. F. Cruz, T. C. Ada. An act to amend Section Three Zero One Zero Two A Of Chapter Thirty, Title Five Guam Code Annotated, To require agencies permitted to retain counsel Other than the Attorney General to hire classified in-house counsel.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, nay. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay.
Bill number one eighty dash thirty-two, received eight yea votes and seven nay votes. Bill number one eighty dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two forty-five dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number two forty-five dash thirty-two, C O R, As amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land. Introduced by V. C. Panglinen. An act to amend Sections Eight One Four Four, Eight One Four Five, and Eight One Four Nine Of Article One, Chapter Eight of Title Four Guam Code Annotated, Relative to custodians, investment agents, and bank deposits.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye.
Bill number two forty-five dash thirty-two, receive fifteen yea votes. Bill number two forty-five dash thirty-two is duly passed. Bill number two forty-seven dash thirty-two, C O R. Two forty-seven dash thirty-two.
Bill number two forty-seven dash thirty-two, C O R, As amended by the Committee on Guam U. S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs, and Judiciary. Introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr. An act to repeal and reenact Section Eight One Nine of Chapter Eight, Title Fifteen Guam Code Annotated, Relative to expanding the Guam Slayer statute That would prohibit the inheritance by a person who murders someone From whom he or she stands to inherit.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 247-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 247-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 247-32COR. Two four... Oh, I mean forty... Oh, 48, Bill 248-32.
Bill number 248-32COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Ben C. Panglinen. An act to appropriate $25,000 from the general fund to allow the government of Guam to pay for an inverse condemnation settlement pursuant to Superior Court of Guam Civil Case Number CV1158-12.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 248-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 248-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 312-32LS.
Resolution number 312-32LS introduced by V.C. Panglinen, M.F. Houston-Nikolas, T.C. Adda, F.B. Uggan Jr., T.R.M. Barnes, V.J.F. Cruz, R.J. Rispisho, D.G. Rodriguez Jr., J.T. Wampat, E.D.D. Relative to requesting defattory judgment from the Supreme Court of Guam as to the withdrawal of funds from the Income Tax Refund Efficient Payment Trust Fund for purposes other than the payment of income tax refunds, and more particularly the interpretation and application of the prohibitions on the use of the Income Tax Refund Efficient Payment Trust Fund as set forth in 11 GCA 50101 and 11 GCA 51101.
Roll call. Yeah, roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, nay. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay.
Madam Speaker? Yeah, I'd like for my name not to be placed on the resolution.
Madam Speaker, I would like for my name not to be placed on the resolution. Please my name not to be placed on the resolution.
I understand.
Madam Speaker, please take my name off the resolution. Madam Speaker, please take my name off the resolution.
Madam Speaker, that includes mine, please, thank you.
Okay. Do we have the count? Resolution...
Resolution number 312-32LS received nine yea votes, six nay votes. Resolution number 312-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 70-32COR.
Bill number 70-32COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Adda. An act to add a new Article 8 to Chapter 32 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to gift cards and gift certificates.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, nay. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Adda, you recognize?
I'd like to change my vote to a yes.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Tom Adda, aye.
Bill number 70-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 70-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 242-32COR.
Bill number 242-32COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Brant T. McCready. An act to amend section 28.65 of Article 2 of Chapter 28, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the crime of indecent exposure.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 242-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 242-32 is duly passed by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Laing Wahan to override Bill number 205-32. Would the clerks... Yes, read the title.
Vetted Bill number 205-32COR, an act to add a new Article 6 to Chapter 77, Division 2 of Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to promoting economic development by authorizing the issuance of tax credits to entities who assist with the development of Guam's agricultural and Guam product sale products export initiative through contributions to offset shipping.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, nay. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Madam Speaker? If I can be recognized, I'd like to change my vote to a nay, please.
I need to finish first of all all the votes. The vice speaker just voted.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Uggan, then you're recognized.
I apologize, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'd like to change my vote to nay.
Senator Uggan, nay.
Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor on vetoed Bill number 205-32, the votes are eight yays, seven nays. Vetted Bill number 205 felt to get the required votes to be overridden, so therefore vetoed Bill number 205 failed. Notwithstanding the objections. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Laing Wahan on vetoed Bill number 223-36, and this is a line item veto. So I'm going to ask the clerks to please read the title.
Bill number 223-32COR, an act to appropriate the sum of $790,000 for the compensations to farmers for crop damages program established pursuant to Chapter 64A of Title V of the Guam Code Annotated.
Because it's a line item, can you please read the appropriation amount, because it's not the full $790,000. So, okay, this, on page one of it, it says appropriations of the prime factor culture, notwithstanding any other provision of the law, the sum of which originally was $400,000. The Governor has line item that amount and reduced it to $60,000 to be appropriated from the Guam... from GITA for the farmers. So that's the extent of the language, the line item veto. Roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, nay. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Panglinen. Senator Panglinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay.
Line item veto for Bill number 223-32 received nine yea votes, six nay votes. Veto, line item veto for Bill number 223-32 spelled to get the required votes for it to be overridden, so therefore, it failed. On the nomination, I think that's all, right? No more bills? Okay. So on the nomination of Ernesto V. Espaldon Jr. to serve as a board member of the Guam Economic Development Authority, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Ernesto V. Espaldon Jr. received unanimous support, he is therefore duly.
Madam Speaker, please let the record reflect that Senator Tony Ada, to be excused.
Oh, I didn't see him behind that, so, yes, okay. So he received 14 yea votes.
Thank you, Madam.
And one excused absence. So Mr. Espaldon Jr. is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Lawrence M. Alcarro to serve as a member of the Council on Mental Health and Substance Abuse, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Alcarro received 14 yea votes, one excuse, so Mr. Lawrence is duly confirmed by this body. Okay, Senator Rispisho, Senator Munya Barnes?
Madam Speaker, if I may, I'd like to ask this august body for reconsideration on Bill number 15-32 COR on the next legislative session day, if that could be at least up for consideration after I get more information, please.
On the motion? Is this for reconsideration? Yeah, it's a motion, that's true, so. Yeah, so, I mean, if you're going to object, then I have to go for the votes, eight votes? Okay, so, on the, all in favor of the motion for reconsideration, please raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. For the next legislative day, Senator Rispisho, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions. I move that we revert back to motions and then recess till 3:00 PM today.
Motion to go back to motions. And we're going to recess until 3:00 today. On the motion without any objections, so ordered.